Everybody here is fine with, please say your name and address for the record, please.
My name is Joan Metz, my address is 6403 Arrowhead Court. And I'm just going to say I heartily disagree with council's interpretation of the Attorney General's finding. I have heard from other attorneys who disagree with you, and so I suggest to the board that you do submit the entire ordinance to the Attorney General before you do anything. Because it makes no sense to put something into law here in Indian Head Park, just to have somebody else go to have to violate it, to have to then have the Attorney General do something more, and somebody gets sued, and then there's attorney fees. They said that. So, I think you'd be best served to make sure all parts of the ordinance are intact, including the stationary distinction, including the battery operated distinction, including the no flash provision for photography. Because I, to my knowledge, have seen disagreements with all of those pieces. Thank you.
Any other input?
Mary Urina, 6402 Arrowhead Court. I agree with Mrs. Metz on her assessment, and I believe that the, my interpretation of what happened in Waukegan with the provision about recording, I have a completely different interpretation than council does. I spoke to the Illinois Policy Institute today, to their Director of Government Reform, and he agrees with my interpretation that governing, the governing, the recording of the meetings is not, not right. And he's doing some additional research on that, so that we can have some empirical evidence. And so, if we table this until the next meeting, I hope that we can have some evidence of what other municipalities have done, and be able to go from there. And if anybody wants a copy of the PDF of what went on in Waukegan, I have it, and I can email it to anyone who gives me their email address. And you can read it yourselves and interpret what they said.
Any other, thank you. Any other questions or comments? Okay, then we have a motion made in segment to table the discussion of this draft ordinance to the October Board meeting. Please call it all on this one.
Trustees Whittenburg. Hi. Bailey?
Yes.
Schnopper?
Yes.
Walsh?
Yes.
Pinshaw?
Yes.
Ed O'Wattman. Yes. Motion carries now on the slate.
Okay. We search it, and, trustee Whittenburg, you have a copy of that.
Yeah, I'll give it to you right now.
Thanks. Thank you. Okay. The next item is the street repair and infrastructure reports. Trustees Bailey and Whittenburg, administrator Alonzo.
Thanks. For those of you that have come to previous meetings, you've heard talk about gathering some information on infrastructure, or what needs to be done in the village, priority, cost, I'm sure you've heard all of that. And with the assistance of trustee Brian Bailey, and Amy Whittenburg, and the Public Works staff, and the front office staff, we put together the needs of the village in these packets, and I think most of you have picked up from the office. There's a, there's a color coded street plan, there is a revised capital improvement plan, and there's a map of the water main system. Also, you'll see what appears to be like a PowerPoint presentation, which I think you could use. In those three documents that I mentioned, it is all summarized in the PowerPoint presentation, so you don't need to look at the other three documents at this time. I will put those documents up on the website next week. But just to talk about, and you can follow through now on the PowerPoint presentation, to talk about, when we had mentioned that we have to identify what we need in the village, streets, water mains, sewer, equipment, whatever those needs are, that we gather together and compile, now we need to prioritize that, prioritize the needs for our community. So as I mentioned, we collected data to see what needs to be done quickly, short term, what needs to be done long term, in terms of our infrastructure needs. This is to start a discussion. This discussion will lead to cost, how to pay for it, what should be done first. Obviously, as you'll see, we can't do everything in one year, can't do everything in two years. It's going to, it's going to be a plan, process, for probably the next five, one to ten years even. As I mentioned, we will, we collected this data, so we can analyze it, prioritize it, put in the short term, long term needs, across the infrastructure of the villages in Indian Head Park, with the administration and the Indian Head Park residents. So we'll be asking for input as well, from the residents, of what you feel the needs are. We also have to understand, as I mentioned, cost, the financial and human resources needed in the short term and long term, to update and optimize the infrastructure for Indian Head Park. And then we will discuss alternatives to funding and scheduling the completion of these projects. That's what I say, when I mention the completion of these products, well, what we want to do in one year, what we want to do in two years, what we want to do in three years, five years. So if we move on to page three, and it just kind of talks about, you know, why do we establish, why do we need a plan? Well, we have to know what we're talking about, what we're looking at. A short and long term capital infrastructure plan is the most effective way to organize all of our infrastructure needs. We just can't say, here it is, let's do all this. We have to put it into some prioritizing organization, short term, long term. The plan will focus the village, to assess its current infrastructure, prioritize, as I had mentioned, what needs to be fixed, and analyze how the cost of fixing infrastructure will affect the village. In other words, how it will affect the taxpayer. We haven't done much to keep up with a lot of the infrastructure issues, because as we know, the economic downturn, budget limitations on the village, in updating our water, sewer, streets. So we must analyze, review, and come to conclusions on investing in our own infrastructure, so that we can provide village services for the years to come. On page four, we talked about the water and sewer. Our water, village has 16.22 miles of water main infrastructure. Ninety percent of the water mains are 40 years old, and 1.16 miles are 20 years old. Now, because they're 40 years old, doesn't mean that's already to collapse. The water mains are strong. I've seen some water main breaks that the water mains that are 40 years old, they're still a strong piece of material. On page five, we take a little closer look at the water mains. The ones that experienced, the areas that experienced the most breaks, and that's five locations. And as you can see there, they identify how many feet, and the approximate cost. Again, this is an approximate cost. The cost could be higher, sometimes as we look into engineering, or we find other issues that involve a certain repair. And this we look at as, this page shows a short term. If we were looking at immediate needs within the next two years, next two to three years even, these are the locations of the water mains that we would look at repairing first. And that is a cost of an estimated of $1,125,000 for the short term, short term water, sewer, capital improvement. Page six, you can look at, it takes these, it takes the locations from page five, shows you the dates, and a location of where the water mains have occurred. You may see that some of the addresses are the same, that's just because some of the houses, the lots are large, and it could be so many feet away from each other, where a lot of things occur. But this will give you an idea, if you look at it, I'm certainly not going to go down every date now, and every location, but though, it shows you an idea. And in that handout that I gave you, there's a better picture of the maps for the water main, which you can see, and behind that is the map that shows exactly where all the water mains are. Page seven is the same thing. It shows of those five locations that we mentioned, where the water mains and the dates, where the water main breaks took place at the base. Next, on page eight, we look at the streets. We took nine streets that we felt, from that, you'll see later when you look at home, we have that color coded street listing that shows how we prioritize, which streets should be repaired first, whatever the needs. Some of the streets are listed also with curb repairs, because as we go, if we're going to repair a street, that also means curb repair, we will do it all at one time. So I identified nine streets that would need immediate attention within the next one to two years. Arrowhead Trail, Duendrieck Lane, Edbrook Lane, Deer Press Lane, Ashbrook Lane, Kiercooke, Cascade Drive, Pembroke Drive, and Butler Road. These streets were chosen by what's known as a patient rating, the structure of the street, the quality, with the village engineer and public works superintendent and Stanton driving the streets and looking at them. There were three streets that you'll see that were identified that needed repairs, but we removed them from the list due to the location and the low use. That was 65th Street, which we've heard is up for debate about closing the street. Eastern and Vine Streets. These are streets that are not heavily, are heavily used. Vine Street in particular is around our shopping center, like the 7-Eleven, at Joliet, Wolf Road, there's a two, right next to Wolf's Head Inn, and there's some empty lots there, there may be some mains that need to develop, so we simply don't want to repair that street up, and doing it, if something's going to occur there, it could ruin the street. Many streets need crack fill, and some repairs, some curb repairs, an estimate a cost of $551,000. And I neglected to mention that on the nine streets, as you saw above, replacement costs is an estimate of $1,059,701. Again, those are estimates. It could be a little higher, once you get into engineering, and you do some floor sampling, you might learn something different about a street than you should be doing. I will have that detailed list that I handed to available on the website. And the total immediate capital needs for streets is $1,610,791. And assessing the infrastructure in general, we have a short term list that you can look at. I'm not going to read everything on there, but I do want to highlight a few things. One of them is sanitary sewer collection system televising. Superintendent Stanton advised that we should be doing this, and will tell us, right now we don't know how our sanitary sewer system is doing. So if we start a televised program, is that correct?
Yes.
Listen, we can look, we can see, we may find everything's fine, we may find that there's places that we need to look at, but right now, we can't do that until we, so that's why that is one thing that is moved up in short term, that we should be televising. Another issue that we added is the ash borer. We all heard about ash trees and the ash borer. There is no estimated cost that I have there now, because what the village has been doing for the last two years, the Public Works Department has purchased treatment materials for ash borer, and they have been treating the trees. What we're learning now is that some of the older trees, that's not working, it may be working for some of the younger trees. The Public Works has informed me that there is even some injections that maybe can be done to some trees. So what Public Works is going to do now, between now and the October meeting, is inventory all the ash borer trees on the right of ways, see how they're doing, see which ones may need to come down, give an estimated cost of what they would cost, what it would cost to put a replacement tree. They will evaluate maybe some of the younger trees, and we can move to another step of treatment, and what that would cost, and give it a try, and put this all together. We should have that back at the October meeting. There's some other issues there you can look at, you can read it, you can see for yourself, whatever you go through all of it. Then there's a longer term, infrastructure in general, which could be five to 10 years. You can look over that. There's some painting issues, you know, things that could probably wait to be done in the next, you know, five to 10 years from now. Looking at some conditioning units that may be needed to be replaced in the next five years, things like that, that we kind of listed out on the longer term, that may be not be as an emergency, we could repair as we go. One thing I want to go back, I'm sorry to mention about the ash borer tree, it was topped in my head. What we have been doing though, we have found some that were dead and dangerous, we have been taking them down. So we are, in our normal budget routine, removing trees and cutting trees, we have So assess, on page 11 now, assess the infrastructure general, you'll see there's some completed projects, there's rehabilitation of the sanitary sewer main, a main replacement on Cascade Drive was done, as we all know, the Cochise Dry Water Main Improvement was done, we replaced a John Deere tractor, we replaced a vehicle for the water department. Well number two, we have two wells, one is at the back of the building here, that we don't, we maintain it, we make sure it's running in case we need it. We haven't yet, there was another well that we just closed, capped, and is no longer of use. But at the bottom, you'll see it, the total of short term projects in general is $948,500. The total for the general long term projects is $1,818,375. And the total cost of the completed projects was $426,250. So on page 12, you'll see a summary of the water, sewer, infrastructure, short term, of $1,125,000. Short term, street infrastructure, $1,610,791. And short term, general infrastructure, $948,400. For total capital, for short term needs, $3,684,191. And for long term, general infrastructure, $1,818,375. So you can see why I said it has to be planned, prioritized, stretched out over time, because obviously we're not going to do it all in two years. Page 13, what is the next step? We've heard, we've heard the short term, we've heard all this. Now what we need to do is further, as I mentioned, now we have to further prioritize the short term needs, because we can't do even all the short term needs at one time. And I think that would come, trustee, and the mayor, schedule a town hall meeting, for people to get their input, for the board to give their input about what we think we should. What's important first, should we do all the streets first? Should we do some of the streets in one water main? Should we do, whatever, break it up, and come up with a plan, and then we'll see. I stated here that we should have a town hall meeting in October. Obviously, it could be end of October, maybe the first of November, I don't know, whatever date the board comes up with. And as I mentioned, we would have to identify in the media what we want to do first, call it phase one, phase two, maybe within three years, and phase three, three to five years. So that, that would be our next step. Absorb this information, we have a town hall, or whatever type of meeting we want to call it, the residents get their input, with this information being out there, trustees get their input. And then of course, during that time, we'll have to discuss funding. Now, there are a few mentioned here, that doesn't mean they're available, that doesn't mean we could, or we can't, but it's worth discussion to put into. One of them is municipal bond sale, another is prepare for a referendum for next April, the next election, do we have the S Attorney, one ordinance would be needed, if we were to do that, or plan a new day, I always, for some reason, I always forget that. A hybrid plan, do we put a number of things together, a few tax, bond sale, and a referendum? Do we increase revenue through short water fees on a temporary basis for water main replacement? Because as we know, we would have to discuss, there's residents that don't get their water from Indian Head Park. So how do we, how do we segregate that?
One other one that, and again, just to add potential, this is one that I had mentioned before, in respect of just strictly street, I think that could be increasing vehicle sticker rates, as well as more strict enforcement of, requirement, people like vehicle stickers.
We could add that, that could be debated, that could be part of something, or part of a monitor, or a mixture. But that would be the next step, is to take all this information, digest it, look at it, come back to, if I'm using the right term, the town hall meeting, as we talked and discussed, see what the residents would like, see what the board of trustees would like, and see how we convince this off the board, and how we decide to go ahead and fund it. But it does, this is the reason for a plan, so now we look, see.
Can I ask Brian? I'm sorry, I would ask to hear from Brian and trustee Whittenburg. But could you just describe, just for the record, the documents that were cast out here besides?
Sure.
What's going to, PowerPoint, and then what's going to be on the?
The PowerPoint will be on the website. The PowerPoint is a summary of the three documents. The one is the, is the map of the water main, and it shows where the, the first one shows where the breaks are, explains it. The second one was the color coded, here, the color coded, yes, that shows all the streets in town, and how we felt what their needs are, and how they were rated. And then we had the third one, which is the capital improvement plan, which is also summarized of the capital improvement that you saw in PowerPoint. So we'll put all of these up there on the website. You that are here have copies at home. For those that were not here, we'll have it all up there on the website. And hopefully, we'll be prepared for a discussion to, the important. Page 13 is the important part of it, again, we have to prioritize what we want to do first, and then we have to decide how we're going to look forward.
To you, and had in the public works, yeah, and the other one's involved, the trustee Whittenburg is helpful.
He's helpful because of my computer skills. I really get my triggers, but I, I think we've worked, I think we've had.
And I know Phil worked on the water main, and asked that a lot, and trustee Bailey?
And I don't have anything to add, really, in terms of the streets, et cetera, I think that's the expert. I just want to say, and I want to reiterate, the mayor just said, you know, while I appreciate Superintendent, or I'm sorry, Phil's administrator, Alonzo, giving me credit for this, there was a lot of hard work put into this, and that hard work was put in by him, by Superintendent Santon, and by the village engineer, they did a lot of work on this, and at least I, I think we all appreciate all the work you guys did on this, and putting this together. My concern again is, we have a list here, but how do we pay for it? I mean, we've tried a number of different methods, and I guess that's what we're going to discuss, maybe at a future date. But it's nice to have a list, but we can't do anything with this list unless we have funds to do it, and we don't have those funds right now. So I'm glad we have a list, but the bigger problem is, I think, in front of us, which is how do we pay for what we need?
Trustee.
I think it's a great opportunity to ask it up to any questions that you can give us.
Well, I intend to, but I wanted, I always give the trustees, all of the trustees first, an opportunity to ask any questions of the reporters, so to speak, or any comments.
And my only comment is, is that, you know, I hope that, since now we have more, since I've been able to get more interaction from our community, that we'll make this more of a collaborative approach to how we're going to go forward, both short and long term. I feel that in the past, maybe sometimes the residents weren't supportive, because people weren't in the loop, as much as they needed to be, on what we're doing. And I'm hoping this will be that opportunity to look at this. You know, there's many ways to do things, and we have all of these priorities, what we all think is, you know, as being the subject matter expert, may be able to help us on how we can one versus another, from his perspective, and all of you might have a different perspective. So I think, I look forward to having that kind of discussion about prioritization, if we can get down to getting it done.
Any other questions or comments of trustees?
I think it is a great report, thank you to everybody who worked on it. This is a very big project for the village. Couple of questions about just learning. On the list of the roads, I believe we have a couple bridges, are they noted any different in the village?
We are not, those bridges, like the bridge in just on Green is the association's responsibility. We did not, we did not adopt that bridge under, when we took the street, so that's theirs. And the bridge on going down to the Public Works Department, is that state?
That's the state of Illinois.
That's the state of Illinois bridge, so really, we have no, none of the bridges are our jurisdiction.
All right. Resident Bill Kylie asked if we have investigated the Chicago Metropolitan Agency for Planning, the CMAP, their TIP, Transportation Improvement Plan. He said that Hinsdale and DuPage have gotten state and federal funds through that program, so I don't know if that's anything we've looked at.
I don't know if that program were the feeder streets?
I'm not sure exactly what he's talking about. I'm familiar with CMAP, and there are, there are opportunities out there, but paying federal and state money. But I'm not aware of any, and I've said this before, that they provide 100%, and we have not been in the position to come up with our 20, 30, 50%. Some things that sound like grants, quite frankly, Illinois Department of Economic Opportunity has money out there for some different things, and it looks like it's a grant, so you really look close, and you find out it's a loan interest loan, so you got to pay it back. I mean, you know, we could do this whole list, which is in the neighborhood of $5.5 million is a rounding here, you know, but you still got to pay it back. Somebody gave us the money, we still have to pay it back, so that's part of the problem.
And I'm not sure if that's the same, but it's like, let me check to see if it's the
Oh, yeah, I think that's part of the money.
That was the stimulus era, obviously.
That's true.
All right, and one other question. So if I understand, the, there's nine streets, and then there's crack fill, and so that's a short term. In the back, where you have general infrastructure, long term, 1.8 million, as I understand it, I don't know if that's, and maybe the term, long term, I don't understand, because the 10th street that's not on the list, crack fill can do that for two years, or four years, or something.
Five years.
But that 10th street on the list will have to be done at some point, and the 15th street, so I don't know if that's reflective in the long term, you know, if that number really needs to be up, or long term means eight years, or something.
That's what we need to determine when we decide how we're going to prioritize this, and then we're going to have to get a little deeper with an engineer to tell us, well, maybe this one street should be moved. But, yeah, we will have to decide, prioritize, if we want to wait five years to do some of those road streets, we'll plan that out.
Maybe said differently, let's say somehow we do get the funding, whether it's a combination or what sort, and we get $3.6 million, and we do everything, but it's going to take us 20 years to pay off, that 10th street may need to be done before that is paid off, or, you know, whatever, we have the money. So I guess I'm looking at, maybe holistically, maybe another way to say is, how much should we be saving for road maintenance a year? I believe I believe we have $94,000 in the budget for depreciation for the water system, so maybe we need $300,000 a year, just to make up a number, so that way we know, you know, if we're gonna borrow 3.6, or we're gonna get raised, how are they looking, that we still need to be saving that money.